Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this Administrative Informal Workshop to Session on this 22nd Day 2025 at 4:00 P. M. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. We are now on to School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. I'm going to pass out our May 2025 meetings with the Superintendent and school visits with the Superintendent, and I'm going to start this way this time. Do any other board members have anything to report? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the Mental Health Task Force update, and we welcome Robert Jamison, Executive Director, Office of Student Support Services.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Robert Jamison, Executive Director for the Office of Student Support Services, and I'm here today to provide an update on the current mental health initiatives in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. For today's presentation, we will review current needs and challenges related to mental health, share information from the Mental Health Task Force, and outline overall next steps. Approximately 19.1% of adults in the United States experience a mental health disorder each year. Half of all mental health disorders begin by age 14, and 75% by age 24. Related to this, in March 2024, I reported the table on the bottom left as a summary for the first three quarters of the 2023-2024 school year. Through March 28, 2025, the table on the bottom right reflects the preliminary unofficial total number of suicide risk assessments completed by school counselors since August. Last year's data covering a similar timeframe serves as our comparison. And although these totals will change by the end of the year, we are trending in a positive direction, and at this pace, we will complete less suicide risk assessments than last school year. Many of the updates I shared today come from the work of this year's Mental Health Task Force. This year, as in previous years, the task force is comprised of parents, a school board member, Mrs. Weems, community mental health service providers, community stakeholders, school administrators, counselors, and central office staff. On the slide, you see the logos of the community organizations who are participating, and I want to take this opportunity to thank all participating members. Their hard work, dedication, passion, and willingness to contribute are amazing, and the work of the Mental Health Task Force continues to serve as an extension of our Virginia Beach Safety Task Force led by Dr. Robertson and Mr. Jack Freeman, as well as city officials. The 10 recommendations confirmed with the School Board in August 2021 are grouped according to the barrier they address and guide the task force's organizational structure. This year, the stigma and identification work teams were combined so that they could focus on their efforts on delineating between the needs of staff and students regarding mental health. For updates and accomplishments, we will begin with the access work team. The Division continues to partner with Child and Youth Behavioral Health of Virginia Beach to offer rapid response services to elementary students and their families. These services ensure families are connected with appropriate services available through the city. Since the beginning of the school year, we have processed 22 rapid response referrals. We expanded our partnership with Child and Youth Behavioral Health to include brief counseling, and this program began in September at the Renaissance Academy. Child and Youth Behavioral Health clinicians provide six to 12 sessions of short-term solution-focused counseling during the school day, and since the launch of this program, there have been 41 referrals. Additionally, we continue to partner with CHKD to offer a bridge program to secondary students and have expanded these counseling services to some elementary students. Just as a reminder, the Bridge Program is designed for students who are at risk for admission to a mental health facility or who are recently discharged from a mental health facility. These counseling services are a bridge to get students settled back at school. This school year, we have received 95 bridge referrals. Separately but connected through our Department of Technology, Securely provides a variety of features to help us ensure a safe digital environment for our students, and Securely staff alerts us when students submit content that suggests a threat to harm self or others. During school hours, these alerts are received and addressed by Security and Emergency Management and school staff. After-school hours, Security and Emergency Management staff respond to these concerns 24 hours a day, on nights, weekends, and holidays. With our partnership with CHKD, the Bridge Program staff respond to the after-hours mental health securely alerts. This year, CHKD has responded to 54 of these cases, leading to the completion of immediate risk assessments, creation of safety plans, and referrals to emergency services, with six resulting in a referral to the Bridge Program. For context, we had 41 after-hours mental health securely alerts all of last year. These programs, referenced on this slide, require active parental consent and provide services to students who are demonstrating behaviors that may indicate the need for behavioral health screening, short-term intervention, care coordination, and/or referral to ongoing services in the community. So I cannot stress enough the importance and impact of these proactive and responsive mental health supports. In May 2023, VBCPS did a soft launch of the CareSalus platform. Through CareSalus, families have direct assistance to navigate the mental health care system. CareSalus staff help families find a provider, schedule their appointment, and follow up after their first appointment to ensure their needs have been met. This resource is available to every VBCPS student and anyone who resides with a VBCPS student. Furthermore, CareSalus services are available for any VBCPS employee, along with anyone who resides with the employee. This slide outlines some of the key performance indicators in the form of requests from the community, communications from CareSalus, and warm handoffs from schools to CareSalus. For comparison purposes, please see the data from the 2023-2024, sorry, from the 2023-2024 school year covering the same timeframe. We anticipated a decline in services from last year to this year because more families are already receiving the support they need. I do want to point out the increase in family-initiated services and anonymous searches, as well as the decreases in those who are unreachable, unreachable, and total decline services. As we work to ensure everyone is aware of this resource, it was reassuring at a recent citywide meeting for assistant principals to learn that 100% of all elementary assistant principals were aware of CareSalus and knew the intended audience of the service, which is everyone connected to Virginia Beach. This table outlines demographics for those who access the site. And our next table provides data on presenting concerns leading to the need for support. For context, this is now essentially three reports to you in a row where anxiety is the number one issue that we do see presented in the CareSalus data. Depression is normally number two. Trauma in the past has been number three, so I just want to give that context that it is ever-changing, but that anxiety and depression still remain our top two for three, three years now. And the top 10 providers on this slide fulfill 65% of the 372 appointments coordinated through CareSalus. Please note the percentage of Medicaid-eligible families using the resource. This is an indicator that our families who may have the greatest need are making most use of this resource. And this is the first time that we have seen Medicaid insurance be the number-one listed insurance provider for the CareSalus data. So switching to the awareness work team, they have focused on providing a variety of activities and for schools and the community. Members of the team gathered feedback from student activities coordinators around the Division on providing mental health resources at sporting events. Throughout the school year, task force members shared mental health resources at various events such as college night, college options for military students, the Triple E Fair, excuse me, Employee Enlist and Enroll, as well as the Title I Family Engagement Events. At the most recent Title I Family Engagement Event, members of the Mental Health Task Force participated in a panel discussion where we were able to share information on mental health and resources available in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The team has worked with the communications team to create the flyer you see in the top-right corner, and you will see this in schools and in VBCPS buildings next year. I'm also pleased to announce that this year, VBCPS has partnered with the Grow Smart Initiative, as well as the City of Virginia Beach, to co-sponsor the Celebrating Children event. This event will be held this Saturday, April 26, at Mount Trashmore from 8:30 a.m. to noon. There will be plenty of family-friendly entertainment, a one-mile fun run, inflatables, children's crafts, and resources for all. Found out today, they did confirm the petting zoo, for those who are interested. VBCPS is assisting with the promotion of the event, securing exhibitors, language ambassadors. We have several cheerleading teams. A step team will be providing security. Our tables and chairs will be used, and the VBCPS food truck will be featured yet again. Next year, VBCPS is working to confirm our participation in two grant-funded initiatives with the Virginia Beach Police Department: Handle with Care and Law Enforcement Against Drugs and Violence. Handle with Care is a statewide trauma-informed response to child maltreatment and children's exposure to violence. In this model, if a law enforcement officer or really first responder believes a child may be adversely impacted by an incident in the community, the designated school staff are simply notified of the student's name and told to handle with care. With this information and additional training, school staff will provide additional support should it be needed. Separately, LEED is a program that promotes positive pro-social attitudes and behaviors while fostering healthy relationships, resistance to substance abuse and conflict, and resistance to negative peer pressure and influence. The lessons within this program will be taught by school counselors and school resource officers in four middle schools during the 25-26 school year, and over the next three years, the goal is to cycle this program through all middle schools. As previously mentioned, the stigma and identification work teams were combined so they could focus their efforts on delineating between the needs of staff and students regarding mental health. The team is creating a document for administrators that outlines the mental health supports available for staff, and the document is formatted in a manner so that administrators can better align staff needs with available resources. Additionally, the Office of Student Support Services has worked with Employee Relations and Human Resources to create a document for administrators to use when staff are experiencing suicidal ideation. In regard to student mental health, the Office of Student Support Services provided youth mental health first aid training sessions for staff on March 31st, April 4th, and April 22nd. The team is working with the Office of Family and Community Engagement to create a series of webinars on various mental health topics. The first recorded webinar will be released in May and will cover the difference between mental health and mental illness. I would like to take a moment to share a story about how these resources work together and the impact of these resources on students as well as their families. In December, a young man at one of our elementary schools was in need of mental health support. He had already been working with several staff: teacher, administrator, school counselor, psychologist, and behavior intervention specialists to address behavioral concerns throughout the beginning of the year. However, in November, staff noticed a change, and he began expressing signs of depression, withdrawn or sullen mood, and eventually suicide ideation. The increased mental health concerns led to a CareSalus referral. The mom responded to the phone calls from CareSalus but was not able to make, take her son to the appointment because she cannot take off from work, given she had just started a new hourly job. The young man's symptoms worsened, and the school reached out to mom again for assistance. She explained her situation. The administrative team at the school contacted our office, and we worked with CHKD to get them involved. CHKD staff were amazing, and with the mom's permission, CHKD participated in a meeting at the school along with staff from our team to learn more about his needs. Soon after, we were able to schedule time for the CHKD staff to meet with the student at school to alleviate the need for mom to miss work, and the immediate impact of the services led to CHKD arranging additional appointments for the family during our winter break, and so staff at the school could notice a difference in his behavior within a month's time. So I just want to emphasize how the availability of multiple supports is what makes Virginia Beach City Public Schools different and capable of supporting the diverse needs of our community. We still have work to do, but when a CareSalus referral does not work, we have other options through CHKD and the city for assistance. So our next steps as a task force and division include continuing efforts shared today, co-coordinating the Celebrating Children event with Grow Smart, expanding brief counseling to students, celebrating Mental Health Awareness Month in May, and reporting progress and outcomes to various stakeholder groups. Additionally, I am excited to announce an update we are arranging for CareSalus. Beginning next school year, their services will expand to include coordination of social services to address needs like food scarcity, transportation, financial assistance, and more. These services will be offered at no additional charge, and we are excited to see how this positive impacts, I'm sorry, to see the positive impacts this will yield for our community. So as always, I thank you for your support of the task force and for the opportunity to present today. This concludes the presentation, and I'm ready to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Ms. Melnick?
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Before I ask my question, I just wanted to thank you for sharing that story about that student. You know, sometimes we live, like, in a vacuum or in a world of theory, as I always say, and we forget the reality of people's lives. And for sure, the mother didn't want to be in that position where she felt torn between her child and her new hourly job and the importance of that, but that the team came together and was there for that student. I think that's a really important story to share, not only with us but to the community, because that, that is reality, right?
Yes.
My question, though, back on Slide 6. Work Team Progress. You mentioned something about, did you say 51 referrals to this point this year, but you had 41 referrals?
So 54 this year.
54 this year.
Yes, ma'am.
But the total from last year was only 41?
Correct.
And that was in reference to what?
The after-hours securely alerts.
Okay.
So in the, soon as school ends, roughly around 6 o'clock, when we know all buildings are closed?
Right.
And administrators no more, no longer available. If an alert comes in, Security and Emergency Management, they respond, and if it's mental health-related, CHKD.
And so anybody who's viewing that may not understand, you're talking about a student who goes on their computer, types in something that throws up a red flag?
Right.
And we're on it.
So any search, any communication, submission of a document or an email opens the door to the filter then being active for us to then see that an alert has been submitted and reviewed by their team and communicated to us?
That's amazing technology and important. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Jamison, and I'll take a personal privilege. I'm very proud of the work that you continue to do as the Executive Director for the Office of Student Support Services. So thank you.
Thank you.
My question, and you may not be able to immediately answer, which is okay, is in reference to Slide number 11, where we talk about the insurances.
Yes.
And with Medicaid leading us right now for coverage, if a family loses Medicaid, will, is that when maybe perhaps CHKD or one of the other providers will kick in so that services will not be disrupted for a student? How would that work?
You just brought up another situation that was emailed right before spring break. There's a family going through a change in employment, and right now, they do not have coverage. So there's now a lag time between when the appointment will be secured, once the new insurance kicks in, and as a result, we did a CHKD Bridge Program referral so that the student has the eight to 12 sessions with them over the next roughly eight weeks to help bridge that gap. So that's one. From a Medicaid standpoint, should they have no insurance? One, CareSalus will work with anyone who does not have insurance at all and still work to secure an appointment for them, but the city does an amazing job with Child and Youth Behavioral Health of a sliding scale. So if you have no insurance, they have work to get it down to a dollar per session. So if you have students or families in need, please know that the City of Virginia Beach is a great first step, and we, we feel those connections in Student Support Services. So if Medicaid or no insurance, we can still make sure that support's provided.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Just a quick note, I'm going to be coming onto your team, so make sure you're emailing me, because I want to make sure that I don't miss anything. But I did have a question on the Bridge Program.
Yes.
You talked about it being a referral. Is it a referral from the school or, or their treating physician?
So it can be both.
Okay, because I wasn't sure, and so, but it could be either or.
So typically, let's, well, one thing, and so one piece that we've really enjoyed with the Mental Health Task Force is having local providers on the task force so that when, when they're working with families, one of the questions they ask, "Are you a VBCPS student?" And then they'll share information about the programs that we offer. So the family usually then reaches out to us, but we've had some providers reach out directly to us, and then we navigate that through the school to get the information we need.
Got you. And so like, from the school level, would, do you guys get the referrals from the assistant principals?
Assistant principal, principal, school counselors, social workers, psychologists, and nurse.
Perfect. All right. That was just my only question, and I'm just really looking forward to working with you guys this year. Thank you so much.
Ms. Dwyer?
Yes. Hey, good afternoon. Thank you for what you're doing. Not, not an easy job. So what do you think are, it looks like we're on an increase with mental health issues, suicide, sadly. What are some of the factors that you personally feel are contributing to that, and also, what can we as a community do? Maybe tips to be more aware, more sensitive, how to approach those type of things?
So, great question. As you saw on the CareSalus slide, and I'm just using this as an example, this is not the only data, but the anxiety pieces is very real in our area. From a performance standpoint, from a peer pressure standpoint, I'm, I'm be open and honest, many times, students will do express concerns related to social media, and there's that lack of control, right? In school, I know who's saying what to me for the most part. I know how to respond, but now there's an air of, I don't know what's being said about me. I can't control what's being said about me, and now I'm coming to school, and there's comments being made that are just out there, and it weighs on them. And we've heard that from multiple students in various forms, and the anxiety unfortunately leads to depression, which is why you see that combination, in my opinion, on those top two for CareSalus. And the other contributing factor in a, in a positive way is that we, we are a successful school division, and we do thrive for excellence in our area. So students feel this compulsion that there's a certain kind of success they have to experience, and that's one of the things that we work with them to break down, that there's various forms of success, and just one path is not the only path, and you have options that will be successful for you. So breaking down that perception is another one that we've had to combat.
So, so you've mentioned social media. I'm glad you did. Perhaps maybe unrealistic goals on social media?
It's similar, right? But to the, to the point of, what are we working to attain? And then what you're working to attain, is that reasonable? Is that reasonable for your circumstance, or is it a reasonable pathway that sometimes you feel that it's unattainable and it actually is attainable, and you just need assistance with navigating said path, or learning what that pathway looks like for you? So a lot of our work is proactive, and we don't see it lead to depression, thankfully, but there are those pieces of stress and anxiety that sometimes start out there with what's not actually real, and then they, it comes into school.
Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper?
Thanks for that, that brief. I appreciate it. Ms. Rogers' comment made me think of something, because you're talking about referrals, and a principal might make a referral. Can you describe what that entails?
Oh, sure. So it's, it's a Google form, a Google form that comes directly to our office, so secure, only VBCPS staff outside of when referred by a local provider. They send the information, student name, demographics, as you can imagine, and then the presenting concern. We have a team. We then look at that, review it, follow back up with the school, and then confirm with the principal that someone has made contact with the family so that they're not cold-called by CHKD without any insight that that phone call's being made. So the referral is as simple as, so we've shared it all the league presentations, so high school, middle school, elementary school. Here's the form. They can access that if they see a mental health concern, and then once it's submitted, we respond.
So it's going to, it's going to CHKD simultaneously if the parents have been contacted or before?
It comes to us first, and we review that and follow up with the school to confirm the situation is appropriate for the program that they're seeking, because sometimes, as we've come to find out, crisis situations need to be handled more immediately, and we may make a referral to Kemp'sville Center Behavioral Health, but the information is kept in-house, and through our agreement with them, the information does not get shared unless we confirm with the school that the parent has already been contacted.
Okay, so nobody's sharing information outside of the family?
Correct. They have to give us permission to do so.
That's what I was trying to add. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for this, and I just wanted to make a, you know, a quick comment about the Bridge Program. I think it's amazing that we're offering that wraparound service to our students that need it, and, you know, I, I just want to point out for the public, because it's this comment that we get sometimes. The asterix on Slide 6 says all programs require active parental consent. So, you know, we're offering those wraparound services, but they're, they're also parent-driven. We're just helping out. So with that, we are now on to compliance update, and we welcome Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief of Staff, and I will be presenting a compliance update based on the School Board Resolution dated April 8. In this workshop presentation, I will discuss the history of federal actions that led to the creation of a School Board Resolution. I will present the School Board Resolution before sharing how administration has begun to address each part of the resolution. Finally, I will conclude with time for questions or comments from Board Members. The key drivers of federal action are noted on this slide. On January 29, President Trump released Executive Order 14190. In this order, President Trump states that "My administration will enforce the law to ensure that recipients of federal funds providing K through 12 education comply with all applicable laws prohibiting discrimination in various contexts and protecting parental rights, including Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964." Two weeks later, on February 14, the Acting Assistant Secretary of Civil Rights in the US DOE released a Dear Colleague Letter. The contents of this letter can be found pretty much in the first sentence of the letter, which reads, "Discrimination on the basis of race, color, or national origin is illegal and morally reprehensible." It went on to cite Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Equal Protection Clause of the United States Constitution as its base in law. Two weeks later, on February 28, a third document was released from the US DOE. The purpose and contents of this document were to provide clarification to the Dear Colleague Letter in the form of frequently- to the Dear Colleague Letter in the form of Frequently Asked Questions, or FAQs. Fifteen FAQs were shared, ranging from can schools separate by race if they treat all students equally? To are diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI, programs unlawful under SS, SFFA, Students for Fair Admissions versus Harvard. The final driver was an April thir- third letter from the VDOE requesting certification of two documents. Title Six and SFFA versus Harvard and FERPA versus PPRA. The first of the two certifications is due April the twenty-third, and the second is due April twenty-ninth. From each of the local educational agencies, LEA, to the state educational ag- agency, SEA. On April eighth, the School Board passed the resolution currently on the screen directing the superintendent to work with legal counsel and staff to take the necessary steps to comply with the aforementioned federal actions. Not stated, but it should be noted, there is recent history in higher education where the federal administration has frozen or cut funding to institutions that do not comply with federal directives. At risk for Virginia Beach City Public Schools in terms of federal funding is approximately seventy-four million dollars. On this slide, you will find the first two parts of the resolution. Please take a moment to review. On April ninth, the day after the passing of the resolution, Dr. Robertson began meeting with Mrs. Lanet- Lanetti and key staff who would be leading the work to comply with the resolution. In terms of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Mr. Ty Harris is leading the work to revise the DEI website to reflect the office name change, as well as areas and other departments that reference the work of DEI. It should be noted that in the earlier mentioned FAQ released by the USDOE on February twenty eighth, it states in the Frequently Asked Questions, number eight, "But whether an initiative constitutes unlawful discrimination does not so- turn solely on whether it is labeled DEI or uses terminology such as diversity, equity, or inclusion." "The Office of Civil Rights Assessment of School Policies or Programs depends on the facts and circumstances of each case." "The answer to this FAQ provides additional helpful context for determining whether DEI is unlawful and will be important for those who wonder about certain programs." As noted, the Equity Plan and Equity Dashboard have been disabled. "The future of the Equity Plan is based on Policy Five dash four and any actions taken by the School Board as part of the Policy Review Committee Process, PRC." "The dashboard is being reviewed and will likely be renamed to better capture the contents of the dashboard, which includes academic and qualitative data." "Other educational programs, such as those captured on this slide, are under review." "Three have been determined to be in compliance with the federal directives." "The Tide Coalition is thriving in each high school where students focus on projects to increase a sense of belonging for all students in the school." "Beach Girls Rock is a program focused on increasing girls' exposure to STEM, a field where data suggests women are less likely to pursue." "The Making Waves Mentoring Program matches staff and two School Board Members with a student in grades three through eight who are at risk." "Two programs awaiting more information are the Equity Council and the African-American Male Summit." "Although we see a pathway for each to continue, changes may, may be necessary to ensure compliance with federal directives." "The third part of the resolution is captured here." "As you can see, the Policy Review Committee has added Policy Five dash four to the April twenty-third PRC Agenda for Discussion." "The fourth and fifth parts of the resolution are captured here. Please take a moment to review." "As noted previously, Dr. Robertson met with Dr. Bannicky and Mrs. Lanetti between April ninth and eleventh to discuss our current strategic framework, Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five, and the recently approved Next Framework, Compass to Twenty Thirty, using the contents of the resolution as a guide." "At this point, both plans are being reviewed and revised, even though Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five will sunset in just over two months on June thirtieth." "To ensure compliance with the federal directives, we felt it necessary to remove Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five posters from all school buildings, classrooms, and offices." "On May thirteenth, administration will present the revisions to both plans." "Upon approval, both plans will be updated and placed back on the inter and intranet." "We have also modified the Strategic Plan site on VBSchools.com by removing the Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five video and resources from the intranet site. Also removing references to the Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five Strategy Map, removing access to Compass Twenty Thirty. But also, we will keep a cop- cop- copy of Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five on the site until April twenty-third, when the Title Six verification is signed by Dr. Robertson." "Part six of the resolution is here. Dr. Robertson assigned me as the designee in this area. I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Tropman and then Mrs. Pace to discuss the process to review employment, contracting, and purchasing practices." "I think it's important to note that administration follows School Board policy in each area as confirmed by Mrs. Lanetti. Section three, more specifically Policies Three dash thirty through Three dash thirty-nine, Section Four, more specifically Policies Four dash six through Four dash eleven, guide our work." "Please know, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has always adhered strictly to federal and state legislation, our policies, and regulations." "The final two parts of the resolution are captured here. The VDOE amended the due date for certification under Title Six and SFA, FF, SFFA versus Harvard to April twenty-fourth. Dr. Robertson will be prepared to sign off as noted in the resolution on April twenty-third. A second certification based on FERPA and PPRA is required by April twenty-ninth. Dr. Robertson will be prepared to sign off on this certification as well on April twenty-ninth, and will brief the Board on new actions on April twenty-ninth that occurred between, uh, this evening's meeting, April twenty-third through the twenty-ninth." "This concludes the compliance update. Uh, the team and I stand ready to hear any comments you may have and/or address any questions." Thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Hi, thanks so much, uh, for your presentation. I apologize that you have to make such a presentation. Um, first, I actually, before I get to my question for you. Um, Mrs. Lanetti, is the Department of Education being litigated right now as, as to their authority, whether or not they can control what schools teach?
I'm aware the NAACP and the Legal Defense Fund have filed at least one lawsuit that went in there. I believe there are other actions that are out there, uh, different types of policies at the, um, at the college level right now. I have not seen the K- Twelve level, which appears to be the NAACP lawsuit that just was filed yesterday.
So this resolution being based on guidance that's under litigation, should that litigation be, or should that um, executive order be overturned? Is that gonna open us up for litigation? Because we're following guidance that isn't part of act- uh, I mean, if it's overturned, is that gonna leave us open for litigation?
At this point, there's just been something filed, there's no answer to it, no court action. So it would depend on whether the court takes action or not, when and if that would happen. They appear to be looking for some type of preliminary injunction to stop it. That is a possibility that could happen, but there's been nothing filed in answer yet, so.
Okeydoke. Thanks for that. And, um, I wanted to just, I guess, make a comment to Mrs. Woodhouse's presentation. I'm looking for the slide. On Slide five, I noticed that the programs for Tide Coalition. What is the Tide Coalition program do? Sorry.
And I can refer to, um, Mr. Harris.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Harris.
And that's okay. He's ready and willing to stand up here and answer some questions.
The Tide Coalition, uh, which stands for Togetherness Through Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity, was established to address, uh, concerns around sense of belonging, particularly at the secondary level. Uh, we started at the high school, and it was based on, on data that we had from students um, who reported that they, um, would enjoy, um, more opportunities, uh, to have their voice heard. And, and so we created this two years ago. And, um, it is, uh, run by students themselves, which are, are representative of, of their, their school community. The principals had the full autonomy to select students, students were also able to volunteer. Uh, it's open to everyone, and, uh, our data shows that in just one year, we saw a, a jump in the, um, sense of belonging figures for every single high school.
Do you know how many students that affects?
Total, we have, uh, roughly two hundred and twenty across all of the high schools, and that includes Green Run Collegiate.
Awesome. And what about Beach Girls Rock? I know that that is to, uh, empower female students in STEM programs. Do you know how many students that one includes?
Yes, our fall offering is always held at one of the local schools. And that's typically, um, around two hundred and fifty students, between two hundred and two hundred and fifty students. Our spring event, we have a partnership through, uh, Old, uh, Old Dominion University. And we're, we have to cap that because of the, the space, and so that's always around one hundred and fifty.
And what about, can you tell me more about the Making Waves Program?
Sure, the Making Waves Program, um, is designed to allow for mentoring opportunities with central support staff. Uh, we, we have really good partnerships in this division, uh, with mentors, but unfortunately, um, you know, we don't have enough always, and so, uh, the Making Waves Program provides opportunities for central support staff to get into, uh, schools and, and, uh, mentor a, a student.
And how many students is that?
Uh, we currently have forty, forty students, I gotta.
It's okay.
Forty, forty students.
And how many students is the African-American Male Summit affect?
The African-American Male Summit historically is, is right around two hundred. This past year, uh, I think we had our largest, um, turnout. Uh, it was closer to two hundred and fifty.
Okay, and then the Equity Council, can you tell me more about that?
Sure, the Equity Council, uh, we have representation from parents, from, uh, school employees, administration, to School Board Members. Um, and ultimately, we discuss ways to ensure that, um, you know, our actions are, uh, in line with our goals for the division. Um, and through the Equity Council, we've had, um, we've been able to, um, kind of reflect on some of the programs that we do offer, some of the things that, uh, you know, the community is talking about. That a lot of times that will be raised during the Equity Council. Um, but ultimately, it's just a time for us to kind of, uh, with representation from all interested stakeholders, uh, really talk about what's happening, um, in our school division and, and how we can be of, of assistance to improve the outcomes for all students.
So, you're saying that the Equity Council has to, it, sorry, let me back it up. The Equity Council is sort of in charge of creating some of these programs, is that what I'm understanding, or no?
They, they don't create them.
Oh, okay.
But they do, we do, we wanna make sure that our offerings are impactful and, and successful. And so, you know, we, we do, with, through the Tide Coalition, the Equity Council, there are Equity Council members that are part of that. We also have, um, members of the Mental Health Task Force, um, and the, uh, SELAT team that are in the schools helping with the Tide Coalition. And so, um, bringing that back to the council, you know, what are we hearing from students that, um, could help lead our work?
So, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Woodhouse, the Equity Council and the African-American Male Summit, they do not have asterix next to them. Is that, what is it about them that is so questionable?
I can take that one up.
Sorry.
Uh, so in consultation with Ms. Lanetti, uh, we wanna take a closer look at the language around the Equity Council and the focus of the Equity Council. And the title of the African-American Male Summit, even though it's, uh, any student is invited, um, are we unknowingly creating, uh, uh, an impression that because we call it the African-American Male Summit that some, some students might not wanna go? So, Ms. Lanetti want a little bit more time to take a look at that, which is why at this point, there's, those are still under review.
Okay, and again, I think my biggest concern is that we've suspended or we're gonna be changing programs. I mean, just in what we just talked about here, it was, um, what, a thousand students that we're talking about with all of these programs? And I don't wanna take away programs from students that are successful. I appreciate, um, your works, um, Mr. Harris. Um, and again, I, I think that because we are looking at an executive order that is in litigation, that this was just as a board, there should have been more time on this. We should have taken more time. And I'm very disappointed in it, but again, it was not, um, my decision alone. But thank you for your presentation.
And if I could just offer clarification. The Tide Coalition, the Beach Girls Rock, and Making Waves Mentoring Program have been reviewed by, uh, the attorney and are in line with, are in compliance with the legislation. So those programs.
Uh, clarification, I've not been asked about the Tide Program, uh, this one I've done, I've looked at Beach Girls Rock, but not the Tide Program, not been asked about that.
Ms. Felton?
Thank you. Just a comment here, I'd like to say, good evening Chair Brown, Superintendent, fellow Board Members, and members of the community. First, let me begin by expressing my sincere gratitude for the condolences, cards, and messages of support I received following the passing of my husband. After more than sixty years of life together, this has been a profound personal loss. I thank my colleagues, the Virginia School Board Administration, staff, and members of our community for the grace and kindness you extended during this time. I also want to acknowledge these colleagues who supported the idea that we not rush forward with a divisive vote during my bereavement leave. Those who understood that my absence and the absence of our board, only other black members should not be leveraged as an opportunity to push through a fragmented solution. I thank you, my colleagues who stood up for me at that present time to hold it. Fragmented solution, fragmented because this resolution was passed without the opportunity of public input. Fragmented because the public trust we swore to uphold through transparency and engagement was broken behind closed doors. Fragmented because the very communities most impacted by the decision were not even in a room when it was made. I have profoundly served on this board through many seasons, and in past seasons, we valued public voices. We listened, we counted the emails, we read the letters, we stood in school all. We listened, we counted the emails, we read the letters, we stood in school all the terms and heard directly from our families. And many of us let these voices guide our vote. But this resolution to suspend the division DEI policy was passed in silence without a hearing, without an impact study, and without a single student voice being heard. Let me be clear. What this anti-DEI resolution is not telling you is that we want, we stand to lose. This is not just about language or remaining renaming a department. This is about the students who rely on these initiatives every single day. If we remove the equity plan without a thoughtful replacement, what do we eliminate? Face program, family, that's a family and community engagement program that provides winter coats and weekend backpacks to students in need, program support by local businesses and community donors, cultural clubs at Ocean Lake High School, where I personally spoke to students who who finally felt and seen and understood their investment, their value to their society and their school. Landstown High School Culture uh Festival, you should attend it. It's awesome. A celebration of identity and belonging. Tallwoods IB program and Sister City International Exchange Program, which opened the world to our students. These are not ideology programs. These are real, tangible supports that shape lives. What do we tell students who now feel their cultures, their experiences, their needs are no longer without or are seen as value? We were told this vote was about uh legitimacy. Yet to date, we have not been shown a single line in policy five dash four or the strategic framework that violates any federal law. We've seen no legal rulings, no urgent mandates. So I ask, why the rush? Where is the evidence that this resolution improves students' outcome? Why were no families consulted? And who are we without our community commitment to equity? We must ask ourselves, what problems are we solving by removing the word equity from our plan? Because if the answer is rooted in policy and not student, then we have lost our way. And so I say this not just as a board member, but as a mother, a grandmother, a lifelong Virginia Beach resident who has been the evolution of this school system. I will not stay silent. I will not stay silent. I will not grieve. I will not let grief be used as a window for injustice. I will not turn my back on students who need our voices. Now more than ever, thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you for sharing those words, Ms. Felton. Um, so I wanted to talk about a little bit, the school boards receive a lot of emails on this topic. And I first want to thank all of our citizens who are watching and emailing and contacting us for reaching out to board members and advocating uh for their opinions and utilizing the democratic democratic process for your First Amendment rights. And I think it's important for the board to understand how critical the process is when operating. You know, we just had a mental health uh presentation that talked about anxiety with students. And I know for a fact that there's students seeing, you know, at home over the last few weeks, wondering, are my programs that I am involved with being cut? Are they out of compliance? Was I part of the suspended programs? The lack of clarity in this rushed decision without as Ms. uh without the impact study or without further diving into this topic. Um, it frustrates me and I know that it frustrates citizens. But I want you to know that I've read every single email. I know others on this board have also read every single email that come in. And I kind of lumped them into two buckets. And I have some clarifying questions that I want to ask based on the communications that we receive from the public. Um, you know, I read them all, dumped into two buckets. Those who are for DEI, those who are against DEI, did thematic analysis and came up with uh some questions. So for those who were kind of against the DEI initiatives, for the public's sake and clarity, is Virginia Beach City Public Schools engaged in currently or previously discriminatory hiring practices as defined by the Dear Colleague Letter? Do we make race-based decisions when we're hiring? Unpack that for me, because that came up a lot in the email.
So as the former Chief of Human Resources, I will tell you absolutely not. So we recruit from all over with the mindset that we want to bring as many candidates to the table as possible. But we have an interview process whereby a committee interviews and selects the best candidate for the position. And so I would say to you, absolutely not. We do not discriminate, and we did not need this to tell us otherwise. It is against the law. It is illegal to discriminate in your hiring practices.
Right. So I I think that was a preconception that some folks had. Um, there's also an idea brought up against for those who are against our DEI policies that um DEI has led to negative academic impact on the division as a whole. Um, for leadership, to the best of your knowledge, have we measured our DEI policies and academic impact? Have we seen data to support that claim?
Well, I would say if you look at our academic data over the last uh five to seven years, which is available on the state website, you will see that our academic achievement data um peaked in two thousand twenty, pre-COVID. Uh, we came out of COVID, we had a dip. We are now making our way back up to pre-pandemic levels. We've exceeded pre-ban pandemic levels in a couple of areas. In the last two years, uh Virginia Beach City Public Schools has had the highest performing uh large school division numbers across the board, and that includes all of our various demographic groups. So the the academic achievement data has been um very good.
Thank you. So that's also a claim that was made and sounds like it is not true. Um, in regards to the Equity Dashboard, this is something I'm trying to wrap my head around a little bit because aggregate, you know, taking data and looking at it through the lens of demographic, it's something that IPEDS does, the National Student Clearing House does. I'm trying to understand what specifically, how the Equity Dashboard is in conflict with uh the federal guidelines, as it seems like the problem is the word equity rather than the actual data and what's being measured.
So part of it is obviously to give us time just to go back and review some of these items. So our Equity uh Dashboard not only has student achievement data, it has other um qualitative data as well. And it is not the singular dashboard that we um use, but some of it was tied to and aligned with the equity plan as well as the equity policy. So as we review or the PRC reviews the equity policy um and make changes or whatever is going to occur, um we felt it best to just bring down those items until we get further direction, which comes from the PRC and the board's vote in term, in terms of our next steps.
Thank you. I'm really, I'm really struggling to see where the current guidelines ne- negate the Equity Dashboard. Um, furthermore, I think when I think about, you know, there's a lot of comments about uh we want an atmosphere that's free of discrimination. Well, one thing you have to do to ensure that there's an atmosphere free of discrimination is measure it and to have actionable data, you know, that you can look at to ensure that we are meeting goals. My understanding is that's exactly what our Equity Dashboard did. Um, and so those those are kind of some of the questions I saw come up within the themes of those who are against DEI. So some of the things that folks were asking about who were for DEI, the biggest concern, well, the biggest immediate concern was the disheartening disheartening with uh how quick this decision was made um within, without the public input. But they are also curious about what programs specifically have been impacted. So as of today, have we closed programs or stopped programs from operating, stopped extracurricular activities, any of those things?
None that I'm aware of, absolutely none.
Okay. Um, I saw on your list, there are some things about the African Amer- African American Male Summit. What about the, what about student organizations like the Black Student Union? Because one of the first questions asked to me by a student was like, it was a member of the Black Student Union who's like, hey, we got a trip going to DC. Is this still a thing?
Yeah, so the the idea is with these federal legislation is that you want all students to have an opportunity to participate. And it is appropriate, and it's in the frequently asked questions as well.
Yeah.
That um as long as you're not creating a situation where it's race-based enrollment or as uh you're you're excluding other people from attending, that it is in line. So that the Black Student Union, the 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 uh the Good News Club, the Ju- the Jew- Jewish group, I mean, all these things, they still if they are, they were operating before, they are still operating.
Yeah. So there's really no student clubs or organizations that
At this point.
Yeah, that don't allow anyone to join. They're all open to all, all groups.
That's correct.
Um, also, some of the questions were around 504s and IEPs. Have those been suspended? Have, update me, have those been impacted by any of this?
No, those are based on federal law, 504 and IEP, so there's been no adjustments to those.
Okay. So I took time just to read through all the the questions that the public submitted. And so I hope that you heard some of the answers to your your concerns, but also heard where there might be misconception as well. Um, and I think we need to realize that when we're talking about DEI, I feel like there's two different definitions um at tension with, you know, the different groups. One group is talking about, you know, discriminatory practices in hiring or, you know, um, programs that are limited to one specific race. While the other group seems to be talking about, everybody has access to opportunity. You belong here. You know, I think when I think about the term diversity, you know, I I look at the, you know, our school, think about the different cultures, different social groups, all the different things that make up our community. When I think about inclusion, that means no matter where you're from, no matter what your background is, no matter what you believe, you have a home here. And when I think about equity, I think about uh, everybody has equal access to opportunity to succeed. And I don't understand the qualm with these three words for the life of me. I've sat and tried to understand where there is issue with these three words, because inherently, they are great things. Um, and when we promote an environment of inclusion, we promote a a sense of belonging, we know that our students learn the most. All data says that. And so I think we should work hard to strive for inclusive environments. So just as I sit here and listen, um I would encourage the public, you know, keep asking questions, emailing them to us. But also, you know, dive in to what these Dear Colleague Letters say and ask yourself, what is actually true for Virginia Beach City Public Schools? Uh, because I think some of the things that are being talked about at the national level are not happening in our day-to-day operations here uh at Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And uh I thank you for listening. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, Ms. um Woodhouse. And and Dr. Robertson may have to answer one of the questions um as well. Um, I, of course, as you know, represent District Four, and and a lot of my emails that have come directly to me, not to the total board, have been in reference to the museum uh at Union Kempsville, which I can understand um the concern when we are also starting to close things at the Smithsonian. So when will we know whether or not um the museum at Renaissance, that is the historical uh museum from Union Kempsville, when schools in Virginia Beach were segregated? When will we know whether or not that will be closed, or will it remain open, or we just don't know at this time?
So Dr. Green, there's been no discussion, no review, no request to look at the the museum at Union Kemp- at Renaissance, representing Union Kempsville?
Yet.
It's not on the table. I guess you could say yet.
Yet.
I've had no request.
All right, thank you. And then the second request I have, it's unfortunate that the lesson our students are learning is what a capitalistic society we live in. Everything is about the money. So as a former specialist at the Virginia Department of Education, where I have managed millions of dollars of grants where funds were dispersed to school divisions in the Commonwealth, many of them did not um soci- they did not thrive just on our grant money that was coming from the state as well as knowing the different um funding sources of where our funds go with some of our federal funds. I know it does impact staff and those type of things. And this is a big ask. Um, seventy-four million dollars, um, can we get an accountant of what that really is? I mean, we keep saying it, but I need to see something more on the other end of it. Like, are we talking about five hundred teaching positions? Are we talking about Chromebooks? Uh, you know, I know. So I I want to see where, what tally's up to seventy-four million dollars.
We'll have, I'll have Ms. Payton pull that information and share it with the board.
Thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
So, Mr. Harris, I'm on the Equity Council proudly. Wh- what part of what we do would you classify as radical indoctrination?
Well, I'm not sure if that's a fair question for Mr. Harris.
It's rhetorical, actually. Okay. If we had to rename the African American Male Summit, what, how would we rename that? Because we, I guess we couldn't call it the Male Summit either. Do you have any idea?
So with, like with any program, we would put together a committee, solicit input. The African American Male Summit um is a true collaboration between all the high schools, the leadership teams in those high schools, as well as staff and community members. So we would um pull together a group of students, um staff, uh community members, and brainstorm some names and titles that they felt was fitting to represent um what it is, uh the core values of the program. Um, so, and that goes back to what Mr. Harris said when he indicated what the Equity Council does. They take a look at programs and evaluate to see if the program is still meeting the needs from when it was developed and whether or not there could be a possible revision or change um or the likes. And so we would not centrally just decide, and that's even if we were going that route, what the title would be. It would definitely be a a shared opportunity with stakeholder input.
And I would add, and I'm reading from the uh United States Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights, frequently asked questions about racial preferences and stereotypes under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. I'm reading from question eight. The question eight reads, are diversity, equity and inclusion programs unlawful under SFFA, which is versus Harvard? And I'm reading in the second paragraph, it says, for example, schools and programs focused on interests in particular cultures, heritages and areas of the world would not in and of themselves violate Title VI, assuming they are open to all students regardless of race. Nor would educational, cultural or historical observances, such as Black History Month, International Holocaust Remembrance Day, or similar events that celebrate or recognize historical events and contributions and promote awareness so long as they do not engage in racial exclusion or discrimination. The way that the African American Male Summit is more of a, it was created because uh there was an Office of Civil Rights report that came out in two thousand six that indicated that we had an underperforming group of students that we needed to address, and that student group was African American males. Um, so the academic and behavioral data indicated that group needed something. The African American Male Summit was created to um help these in, these these students take full advantage of the opportunities they were provided to to make education more important, to engage with their families. Um, and over the last several years, it's been uh made open to all students. Uh, our one concern is, is there, is there an uh unanticipated um hindrance by calling it the African American? hindrance by calling it the African-American Male Summit versus calling it something else? Because it is inclusive of other students. It's not about um, lifting up one group and, and, and putting another group down. It's, that's not about it all. Many board members have attended these events and can see that for themselves. But again, we're just reviewing whether or not there needs to be a, a, an adjustment of the name. Uh, but that's, that discussion has a lot of time to develop, because the next one's in January.
Okay, well, I hope that we can also spend some time on um, asking the division, asking the question, why are more black males suspended in this division, and why more black males are at the Renaissance Academy? I hope we can spend some time on that over this next year, too. So, since I was not able to speak last school board meeting, because I was out of town, I'm, I'm gonna finish with my comments here. On Tuesday, January fourteenth of this year, the newly elected chair of the school board made the following remarks, quote, "I can still vividly remember my first school board meeting. I had concerns about policies and how they were impacting my children in schools. I brought these concerns before the school board in this very room as a mother, taxpayer, citizen of Virginia Beach. One meeting in particular really stood out as I thought about this. I stood over there at that podium and addressed the school board. It was pretty clear that my comments were not appreciated by several board members, and I was treated in a way that made me feel as though my voice was insignificant. That night was a turning point for me in many ways. I learned about the Freedom of Information Act that gives citizens access to facts regarding their school board. I learned more about the process of being involved and ran for school board myself. So here we are, several years later, and I'm honored to be serving on the dais as chair of the school board. Parents, grandparents, community members, students, and taxpayers, you are welcome here. You are welcome to reach out to your elected representatives. We want to hear from you. It is my pledge that my experience will guide me moving forward. I will treat each person and each board member with respect, and will make sure we work together on issues we agree on and find common ground on things that are difficult. As chair, I will strive to leave a congenial, professional, and efficient environment focused on increasing and improving student academic achievement. I value the voters that put each board member here, and I am committed to ensuring that each and every board member is treated with respect and included," end quote. I appreciated those words. They were wonderful. But how soon this board forgot Chair Brown's words? Because on April eighth, this board added a last-minute resolution to the action portion of the agenda. That addition forced a vote on an item without public input, a practice many on this board vehemently oppose. So now here we are tonight, with the list of one hundred thirteen speakers, because we stripped them of their right to speak about an important issue. But clearly, they're going to let us know how they feel, even though this issue is now moot. Now, many in our community feel as the chair did. They do not feel welcome here. They feel dismissed and unappreciated. They know that they can reach out to their elected representatives, but now after a vote occurs. For many, this is their turning point. They now have learned about the Freedom of Information Act, because they too are concerned about policies and how they will impact their children. This board had the power to pause a vote. Mr. Cummings asked this board to delay the vote so we could gather more information and allow the public to weigh in, but that didn't happen. Our basic responsibility as a board member is to be informed and to share that information with the public. You know, it doesn't matter where you stand on this issue, or any issue for that matter. We all know that money will be taken from us if this doesn't pass. And you know what? The public really may have understood that. They may have understood the position that we are being put in. But what matters is that the public has the opportunity to speak, and they didn't get that. People have the right to be heard, and I thought this board understood that. So as a board member, I'm embarrassed, and I apologize to this community for my absence at the last meeting. Integrity has always mattered to me. And once you lose that, it's very difficult to get that back. Our community and this school division deserves better.
Please, Chair Williams.
Thank you. Um, this may be a question for you, Ms. Woodhouse, or Dr. Robertson. You may jump in. I'm not sure who wants to take this. But um, obviously, we were on a timeline on April eighth, because of some executive orders and letters and those three or four things that you highlighted there. After the resolution and the vote on April eighth, you have been busy, obviously. Um, if we would have postponed that vote till tonight, and that motion did not pass, as Ms. Melnick referenced, you would have about eight hours tomorrow to do all the work that you've been in order to let Dr. Robertson sign the compliance with um, a level of comfort that he needs to. Could that have been done in, in the eight hours tomorrow?
So the short answer is, uh, no. Um, it would not have been, it would, it would not have provided the team the opportunity to, to go through um, the document that we've, we received from the Virginia Department of Education on Thursday, April the third, and we also received it from the United States Department of Education on Thursday, April third, requiring us to sign this certification under Title VI and, and SFFA versus Harvard. Originally, the state of Virginia um, asked us to sign the document by April eleventh. That was, again, so just timeline, Thursday, April third, we get a document, we get a request from the Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Education to sign this certification. On April ele- uh, seventh, that Monday, so that was a Thursday. So we go through the weekend on that, that Monday, April seventh. The Department of Education and working with the U.S. Department of Education changed the s- signature date from April eleventh to April the twenty-third. Then we have the board meeting on April eighth, uh, where the, the board decided to move forward with the resolution. Um, because again, uh, the, the discussion on the dais that night was, would we have time to go through the lengthy document and the certification and the fact that in the frequently asked question in the Dear Colleague Letter, the first question lists the site for someone to uh, file a discrimination complaint with the Office of Civil Rights based upon the documents. And I shared in the meeting on the eighth, uh, a wondering about signing this document and conversations I'd had with some other superintendents, where we were a little fearful that uh, by putting our name on this document, if there was a, a concern expressed later, that we were in, in violation because someone posed a complaint, and there was a practice in place that we were unaware of in a division of the size of Virginia Beach, that that would absolutely give someone cause to uh, fire the superintendent. And I shared that with this group. Uh, and that was not my comment, that was comments from my colleagues. So, the, to get to Ms. Williams' question, the reality was, waiting until April twenty-second uh, was not going to provide the administration time to do the due diligence to, for me to feel comfortable, which I will be comfortable tomorrow when I sign off on this document submitted to the state. One other piece, um, spring break didn't help. Uh, you know, normally, it could have been suggested that we, well, we need to meet and give public comment, because that's the right way to do things, but the next time, the next Tuesday that rolls around, the fifteenth, and the fifteenth is spring break, and, and I was in Disney World, so that was not gonna change. Um, and so that, that opportunity did not really present itself. So I, what I would offer is, the, the United States Department of Education put every school division and every state in a pickle when they sent this document on April third requesting signature originally on it before April twelfth, and then with a change to April twenty-fourth. We don't do, we don't send out stuff to our own staff that gives them only two or three weeks. That's, we don't do that. But it put this board and every other board in a situation where time was not going to be provided, and it was not a luxury uh, that you could um, really do things with. And the fact that spring break factored in, that was, that was rough.
Okay, thank you. Um, I too, like my colleagues, I'm sure, read every email. And it's very sad and disappointing that there was so much misinformation and disinformation actually out there as far as we're doing away with everything, basically. Special ed, workforce development. I mean, we got emails, and I just wanna, we got emails about, is, you know, is my child gonna still have an IEP? Um, like, was referenced. That's federal law, that's special education, it has nothing to do with anything but need. And it is, you know, so 504 and IEPs and special education programs are untouched. And that was unfortunate that there, there was um, some, some misinformation or, or some unease on, on that. Um, workforce development, all the work that this board has done, and all our committees and roundtables and our initiatives, workforce development is fine. We're gonna continue to excel, we're gonna continue to grow workforce development, just like we have been. Okay? That is not, that is dependent on what the economy needs, what our city needs, and the interest of our students. That is what those programs are. Um, and lastly, and I, and I know this was probably pointed at me, because there were several emails just to me, the recovery school. It doesn't matter what you look like, who you are, your background. The recovery school that we just voted on is, again, we're going to accept students, needs-based, who need the support, who need that in their journey for recovery. So I'm just, you know, disappointed that, again, there was so much misinformation and disinformation out there that it just caused the community to go in panic, which I can understand. But I'm glad that you showed us the programs here and, and that you've reiterated that, Dr. Robertson. And those are just three areas, and I could go on and on about um, what some of our co- you know, constituents emailed us. Um, but I think that, that we're gonna be fine, we're gonna be in compliance. And I too wanted to ask about that seventy-four million, because I have a feeling a lot of that federal money does go for some of our most vulnerable students, so I'm anxious to get that list as well. And I'll just, I'll say, but there's a lot of other areas that there was some misinformation about, but maybe my colleagues will bring it up. I'll, I'll yield to them, and if not, I'll, I'll look back around. Thank you.
Hey, we're also at five-twenty, so I just want to make sure that board members are cognizant of the time. Uh, we have a long meeting ahead of us, and um, our clerk needs to have a break, too. So we'll, we're gonna stop right at five-thirty, but we can revisit this later i- if needed. Um, Ms. Dwyer?
So I just wanna say, first of all, thank you, Dr. Robertson. I heard you loud and clear for all the clarification, um, including the pressure to sign uh, an executive order that you knew full well we weren't in compliance with. And I hope my colleagues are hearing that, and everyone.
Kind of a point of information, Chair. What's specific?
I, I'm sorry. She's got her right to time. Thank you.
Specifically, Dr. Robertson expressed he wasn't comfortable with signing. So I'm gonna switch gears here. I have a question for Ty Harris. Is he in the room? There he is. So, Mr. Harris, does equity mean equality?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So that being said, um, because I feel like that is a very large crux of the matter uh, in this executive order, uh, the word equality over equity as far as equal. Um, and how do we go about changing the language if equity doesn't mean equality?
Equality refers to the exact same outcomes um, for everyone. Equity is what each individual needs um, to meet their individual needs. And so, uh, you may have different outcomes as a result of that. And we're okay, as long as we've provided those opportunities for those students.
So, I, I honestly think this is part of the problem. Um, what we're doing is we're grouping individuals. And um, I somehow think that that is a dangerous area, and that can be divisive. So, did you wanna comment on that?
I, I, I don't understand exactly what you mean by grouping individuals.
So if equity doesn't mean equality, which?
Ms. Dwyer, I, I just, I don't think there was a question there, so um, and since we have seven minutes and at least one speaker that hasn't spoken, I, I would, if we can.
We can visit it later.
Yeah, I, I think maybe we may have to return to our workshop. Um, Mr. Culpepper?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Um, I think I'll just start by saying, hey folks, this is the process. This is the process. Only, the, uh, the resolution we passed at the last meeting only permanently changed one thing, and that was the name of the Office of DEI. Nothing else has changed. Superintendent pointed out a minute ago that no programs have been cut. What the resolution asked was that we look at things that we know we need to look at to ensure that we're in compliance with the direction um, of the White House. My, uh, the Vice Chair already pointed out the issue of the timeline, and I think she did a very good, adequate job of, of pointing out that there was a sense of urgency. Frankly, I'm surprised everybody on this dais didn't feel a sense of urgency for the school board to weigh in on this issue. Because my view, it did three things. One, it ensured by giving specific direction to the superintendent's staff, that these changes were not merely cosmetic, that they actually looked to focus on what the president asked us to do, and to ensure that we're in compliance with those things, and the state has asked us to do as well. And I'll point out that those issues are also not only uh, in Title VI, but in the U.S. and, and in the state constitutions. Two, it specifically identified areas of concern that asked the staff to look at. And three, and arguably the most important thing, is it didn't leave the superintendent out on an island by, by himself to make these changes and to take responsibility for them, but put all of us elected officials up here to take responsibility and give the superintendent backup. And I actually think that's the most important part of that resolution. Um, there are two other things I'm gonna say, but they're, I could potentially save them till later. Okay. Um, I, I do wanna hit on uh, the African American Male Summit. Uh, I don't object to that name. Uh, Superintendent pointed out quite accurately that the, the real issue is not what it's called, uh, but whether uh, in practice, it's a race basis, race-based uh, summit. And I think it's very easy to ensure that it's not. My interest in that, whatever we decide to call it, is that it be a, an excellent program for the purpose that it is laid out. And there, there are two that come to mind immediately that are, that are in my profession. Uh, one is uh, the Women, Women in Aviation, and the other one is uh, the Organization, Organization of Black Aerospace Professionals. And both of those organizations hold uh, hiring conferences uh, every year, uh, that are widely attended uh, by all race, colors, creeds, and sexes. The, the Women in Aviation Summit uh, is probably the more popular of the two. Lots of people go to it, and the reason is, is because it's very good. It's a great program. And yet, it still achieves its primary mission, which is to highlight women in aviation, and ensure that they have uh, opportunities to be hired uh, into the profession. And same, same for OABAP. Um, sorry, the last thing, I, I'm sorry, I do have to hit here, is uh, my colleague brought up race-based hiring here a minute ago. So I had to go back to the most recent uh, hiring uh, document that we were sent. This is from February twentieth. I know you don't have it in front of you, but I know, I know you're very familiar with what these look like.
Absolutely.
Page three of this document, I, you, you were specifically asked whether we do race-based hiring, and I asked that question two years ago. Uh, 'cause on page three of this document, has the names of all the candidates. Uh, it has their es- their ethnicity, their race, uh, and their gender, uh, all laid out on this document so that everybody can see that. But you pointed out, we don't do race-based hiring, correct? So are we gonna eliminate that from these documents?
So yes, the conversation has been around whether or not we need it. So, our belief in our conversation with Mrs. Lynetti was that that was a request from the former school board in terms of concerns that were coming forward from candidates who indicated they were having difficulties, whether employment with Virginia Beach or promotional opportunities. I do not feel as if identifying a person's race or gender leads to discrimination. It is what it is, and they volunteer that information. Um, and so, it was not- It is what it is, and they volunteer that information. Um, and so, it was not, um, the idea of removing that information, um, but it's necess- it's not even necessary, um, to have in the packet. But again, that came from a previous board's request.
Mr. Culpepper, I will also point out that your strategic plan and the ec- equity plan that you adopt as a board had those as goals. That's what traps the administration. So, that's one of the reasons-
Had what as goals?
Um, hiring goals, um, had it, some of this information, I think it's, um, compassed to twenty-twenty-five, goal four, talks about diversity in the workforce and increasing that. So, that's something you, as a board, had, had adopted. So, that was practice that you had. That's one of the reasons it's currently suspended. Also, in the equity plan, you talk about, um, diversity in hiring and that's in population. Another reason why that needed to be suspended, so we can take a look at those. And those are things that the board adopted based on the equity plan and based on the strategic plan. So, that's why those things are suspended, and we have to bring those back to you.
Okay. Uh, I bring this up partly just to point out, my, my colleague suggested that there was no reason to believe that there was race-based hiring. Just wanted to point out that this is in here, so there is reason to suspect it. Your answer's very fair, by the way, and I don't, I don't disagree with what you said. You know, again, in the military, at our promotion board, they got a picture of me right there. They got a picture of everybody. And people have fought about that for some years for exactly this reason. Um, yeah, I'll, I have questions for you later, but, uh, we're about out of time, so I'll stop there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So, I, I think that, um, if my colleagues would like, um, there's two board members in queue. I also have comments myself. Um, we can return to the, those two, um, members of the board if they wanna have those comments after closed session tonight. Um, and, um, I have some comments as well. So, would we wanna return?
Yeah, they deserve, she needs to go.
Okay. Um, so, are my colleagues okay with us? Um, and it, it'll be myself, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers commenting at that time, um, so that we can wrap it up, because it'll probably be pretty late. So, um, with that, this meeting is adjourned, and we will return for our formal session at six P.M.